We'll call to order our regular meeting of the West Valley City Council. We welcome you all here tonight. We'll begin noting that we have full court in pres and all council members are in attendance. We have an opening ceremony tonight. Councilman Nordfeld, we'll turn to you for that.
I invite everyone to join with me in the side of the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We do note that we have a scout troop here tonight. When they come, we generally ask that you introduce yourselves, or that the young men would come up. Three things: your troop number, your schools, and why you're here, what you're working on.
Hi, I'm Austin Herrick. I'm Troop 796. And my school is Monticello Academy. And we're doing the city shoot in the community.
Very good. Welcome. Thank you for coming tonight. That's everyone then. With that, we'll go to our approval of the minutes from July 7th, the last meeting that we have minutes for. To the council then for approval of minutes.
Mayor, move for approval of the July 7th, 2015 minutes?
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll place it for a vote all in favor of approving the minutes from July 7th. Please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passes unanimously. The minutes are approved. Now we come to our comment period. And this is where the public has an opportunity to participate and to share their thoughts with the council. We have two people who have signed up. We'll begin with Elliot Mott.
Thank you for this time. Good evening, everyone. I'm here to invite the commission on a river trip down the Jordan River through West Valley City this coming Saturday. Inasmuch as it's the day of the 47th time of year, and reports are that the pioneers crossed the valley near here, it would be appropriate that we hook that section. So I have a handout. May I pass it on?
Sure.
We're starting in Teworsville at Freedom Shrine. That's the closest place we can put it. And we're floating north to Redwood Park, 2327. The river flows about two and a half miles an hour right now, so I'll figure out three hours. We'll be a car shuttle involved. If you have a boat, I'd like a life preserver, and I'd like you to join us. It'll be great fun. See part of West Valley City you maybe don't always see. It's very pretty. That's all I have to say. Thank you for the time.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have David Tanner. Okay, thank you. Because yes, if you're here to speak on the public comment portion of a specific item on the agenda, we'll have a separate time for that. This is the general anybody, any topic time. Okay, no one else? All right. Then we come to our city manager for comments.
I have no comments tonight, sir. Thank you.
To the council? Okay. Next, we go to item 7 on our agenda. We have a public hearing regarding application S-102015 filed by West Valley City. And this is in connection with Fairborn Station and amending lots 9 through 14 in the Homberg subdivision, and then to vacate some existing public utility easements. And this is to just kind of get things in place for the work that is going on there. I don't think there's much controversy, but that is the issue there. I guess it's, let's see if I got the right one. Yeah. Yes. At 20, it says 2970 West, 3500 South. It's the official address on that, being proposed by West Valley City. With that introduction, and as a note, these are items that we have dealt with in previous council meetings. We have studied these items typically the week before, and so this will be the second time that we have addressed these on our agenda. So now that we have that before us, we will open it for public input on this application. Anyone here wish to comment on this application S-102015 Fairborn Station? No takers? Okay. Then we will close the public hearing portion. We will come back to the council. And the council will consider ordinance number 15-23, which is the method we use to get this approved. So with that information then, to the council for comment or action.
Mayor, I'll move for approval of ordinance 1523 with just a note that exciting things are happening in our city center here, and we're excited for the growth to continue.
I'll second the motion and the comment.
Okay, thank you very much. I think we all second the comments. Any further comments or discussion? Seeing none, we'll place that for a vote. All in favor of approving ordinance number 15-23 regarding Fairborn Station Phase 1, vacation of lots and public utility easements, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passes unanimously. The ordinance is approved. We will now go to application S-8-8, 2015, again filed by West Valley City Public Works Department, amending a plan amendment for lots 16, 17, and 31, West Valley Truck Center subdivision located approximately 2,400 South and 5,600 West. Again, this is work in preparation for continuing that road on out to 5,600 West and the changes associated with that, continuing work there. That is the issue that is before us. So we will declare open for public input, application S-8-2015. Is there anyone here who would like to speak to this? Seems we have no takers. I thought we would have one, but they're here to speak on a different issue. Okay, seeing no public input, I will close the public comment period of relating to this application and come back to the council and place before you ordinance number 15-24 for the West Valley Truck Center subdivision in West Valley City. For action or comments?
Mayor, I move for approval of ordinance 15-24?
We have a motion before us. A second?
Second.
We've got that before us properly. Any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, we'll place it for a vote. All in favor of approving ordinance number 15-24, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passes unanimously. The ordinance is approved. We now go to ordinance 15-25. This is to amend Section 1-2-110 of the West Valley City Municipal Code. This is to reflect changes in the late fees assessed on unpaid utility billing. In the past, that's been done through a percentage, which is difficult because it's calculated on a daily rate for a late fee, making it very difficult for people to know the exact amount to pay. And so that's being changed to a set fee of $4, wasn't it? Five? Okay. $5?
Uh, this says four.
Four? Okay.
Oh, yeah, if you're right. It is $5. Sorry.
Little bit of confusion, but it's going to $5 as a set late fee during until the next billing cycle. And so that will make it easier to assess and inform people on how much they need to pay when they're late. With that then, we come to the council for comment or action.
Mayor, move for approval of ordinance 15-25?
Second.
We have the motion before us properly. Second it. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll place that for a vote. All in favor of approving ordinance 15-25, amending the late fee assessed on unpaid utility billing, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passes unanimously. The ordinance is approved. We now go to resolutions. We have first 15-120, awarding a contract to Morgan Asphalt for the asphalt overlay project. This is a project that we work on each year for a number of miles of highway throughout or roadway throughout the city to put this asphalt overlay down to preserve the existing roadway. And we have awarded that to Morgan Asphalt, and that is from our Class C Road Funds, $1,497,871. And with that, introduction to the council for action or comment.
Mayor, move for approval of resolution 15-120?
We have a motion to approve. We have second?
Second.
Second is there. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll place it for a vote. All in favor of approving the contract award to Morgan Asphalt for our 2015 asphalt overlay project, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passes unanimously. The resolution is approved. We now go to resolution 15-121. This is to award a contract to Acme Construction Company for the 3425 West sidewalk project. And this is a much-needed sidewalk near an elementary school, near Robert Frost Elementary. This will put that sidewalk in place, and it will come from state funds and Class C Road Funds, and also UDOT is assisting and participated in that. That's where the state funds come from to construct this sidewalk. With that introduction, then to the council for comment or action.
Mayor, move for approval of resolution 15-121?
Second.
Motion and a second for this resolution. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll place it for a vote. All in favor of approving the awarding of the contract to Acme Construction for the sidewalk project, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passes unanimously. The resolution is approved. We now go to resolution 15-122, to award a contract to H&amp;P Tile Company for remodeling the restrooms here at the city offices. And this is much-needed work. There are some drainage problems, and while we're doing it, going to do it right and remodel them one floor at a time. There are three floors. And so those will be done on a rotating basis so that there's always facilities available to the public and staff. And that contract is in the amount of $112,110. Or, yeah, they were the low bid on this. With that introduction to the council for comment or action.
I will move approval of resolution 15-122?
Second.
We have a motion and a second properly before us. Any further discussion? Seeing no further, excuse me, seeing no further discussion, we'll place it for a vote. All in favor of approving the contractor, H&amp;P Tile Company for modeling the restrooms, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passes unanimously. It is approved. Excuse me, I have a little bit of a cough, and so sometimes I can't quite make the statements unless you think I'll get you sick. It's not related to that. It's related to some allergies and so forth. Next, we go to resolution 15-123, to approve amendment of, or to approve an amendment of a memorandum of understanding between our city and Homeland Security Investigations, Immigration and Customs Enforcement for joint operations. This is a fairly routine item. There was an item that we had in place with them, but they require the council to take action on these as we work together with them on various different crime-fighting activities. And certainly, we look at the MSR, not necessarily superheroes. They're super and they're heroes, but they're just great men and women who take care of needed work in our city. Then with that, we will place or bring that to the council for comment or action.
I move for approval of resolution 15-123?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll place it for a vote. All in favor of approving resolution 15-123, memorandum of understanding between our city and Homeland Security Investigations, Immigration, Customs Enforcement, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passes unanimously. The resolution is approved. We now go to resolution 15-124. This is to designate and appoint poll workers for the upcoming municipal primary election on August 11th, the compensation, their services, and a polling place, which there will be one at the Utah Cultural Celebration Center, because the vote will only take place on the primary in that portion of the city, that particular council district. With that then, we'll bring that to the council for comment or action.
I move for approval, resolution 15-124?
Second.
And a second. Properly before us, do we have any further comment or discussion? Seeing none, place it for a vote. All in favor of approving 15-124 for our poll workers and compensation for the primary election, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passes unanimously. The resolution is approved. We now go to resolution 15-131. This is a resolution encouraging the Salt Lake County Council to submit the local option sales tax authorized by the Utah State Legislature, House Bill 362, to the voters of Salt Lake County in the regular November election here that we will have this year. This was added to our agenda after our study meeting. Yeah, won't help. I drink lots of water. I have the cough drop. Thank you. But it does make it harder to talk. So this proposal, these were encouraged by the Salt Lake County Council and others to support the efforts to place on the ballot for the voters to decide whether we should increase the sales tax by a quarter of a cent to be distributed between the Utah Transit Authority, the city, and the county for maintenance on roads. Generally, this came about because the city, the county, is gradually losing ground based upon keeping our roads maintained. They are gradually deteriorating, and the revenue from the gas tax has not been keeping pace with inflation, much less with the cost of the additional road miles and everything else that is occurring. So the legislature decided to give that to the county to put on the ballot, and the county is asked that we support them in placing that on the ballot. So this particular resolution does that. It does not take a position on how we think voters should vote. It is simply to say that it will, we encourage them to put it on the ballot, because we believe it should go to the voters. With that introduction, and we may have some comments on this, because this is new on our agenda, this is one we did not discuss before. We did just discuss it just prior to this meeting.
Mayor, I would rise to move for approval of resolution 15-31, resolution encouraging the Salt Lake County Council.
Okay, we have a second as well. Okay, the motion is properly before us. Any further discussion or comment?
Just want to make the comment again that this isn't a position of the county to be in favor or not in favor of the tax, just the fact that we're allowing the residents to make that decision.
Interesting. Not much in the way of comments. This has received so much comment and discussion in the media and at the county and at the state level and in all the organizations just about that I've been to and others on the council have attended. So perhaps there's a little bit of weariness in hearing it discussed so many times. But with that, seeing no further discussion, we'll place it for a vote. All in favor of approving resolution 15-131, the resolution encouraging the county to put the proposed tax increase on the ballot this November, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passes unanimously. The resolution is approved. Starting just a little slow. Next, we have on our agenda, new business. This is to consider application S-14-2015 filed by Adam Nash. This is to request final plat approval for Wyatt Acres subdivision. This is located at 3100 South, 6400 West. And there was obviously a little bit of confusion on this, and so I will turn to the council because it wasn't clarified that this particular application would have, it's not a public comment one, but because of that confusion, without objection from the council, we will allow the individuals who came to speak on this to speak as part of our public comment period, I guess it would be. Any objections? I guess I should have been a little more clear on that. We did have two public hearings, but this one traditionally does not have a public hearing. So apologize for the confusion there. So we will, do we have to actually suspend the rules on that, or is the way I approached it acceptable?
Hey, I don't think we suspend the rules. I think we just move forward with the.
Well, I actually think you do if you're being asked, because public hearings constitute certain legal rights for an individual, and if you open it for one and not for another, it could put the city in a little bit of legal limbo. But I think without taking formal action makes it a little more official and less likely to be challenged. Not that there's anybody opposed to this, but I think just in practice.
Then the motion that we perhaps should make in keeping with our rules is that because of the confusion with our public comment period, that we reopen our general comment period, and those individuals can speak on any topic that they want.
That's fine.
Because at least one individual had signed up, and others probably thought that they would too. So maybe that's the motion we should have. We'll reopen our public comment period, and it's on any issue, and that will be open to anyone who is here tonight because of the confusion on that issue.
Mayor? Go ahead. I move that we return to item 6 of the agenda and reopen the public comment period.
Second.
Motion is before us. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passes unanimously. We are back to item 6 on our agenda for public comment. Is there anyone else here who would like to make public comments?
Thank you. I am Adam Nash. Actually, just kind of looking forward to getting an extension of our prior final approved Just trying to work that out. I do want to point out a couple of things. I work up and down the Wasatch front, Wasatch back, and out in Tulala County, and working with Steve Lehman and Steve Pastrick and these guys is so professional and so, I don't know how to say it, but it's just so professional. And we can work with these guys. We can figure out our stuff. We got this plat approved a couple of years ago. I have a couple of reasons I couldn't get it done, and now we're just back there trying to get it done again. So anyways, thank you very much.
Thank you. Was there anyone else here who had any additional public comments? Yes, please come forward.
One of the things I was thinking about while I was with the scouts, and I'm not sure if it's been addressed or not, but I live on the east side of Bangator, and to get to the west side of Bangator, regardless of which road you take, it's very tedious, I guess is a good word for it. Has it been addressed, either through the state or through the city, of somehow making overpasses on Bangator in order to make it more safe, make the traffic a little bit flow easier east to west? And that's the only comment that I would have.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing no one else, then we will close the public comment portion of our agenda. And since you said item 6, that opens it up for the city manager and council again as well. So to the city manager.
Still don't comment, sir.
Okay, to the council.
I would comment in response to Mr. Herrick's comment that it's my understanding that UDOT, Bangator Highway being a state highway, does plan to have overpasses, not in the very near future, but as part of their overall plan of that highway, to my understanding.
That's a correct statement. UDOT has a current plan. You can go to their website and see the tentative schedule. West Valley City, due to the current configuration of the left-hand turn lanes, are towards the bottom of the list because that alleviated some of the problem. So as you all know, those are down-the-road ways, and it will be dependent upon funds allocated by the legislature, but there is a plan, and they plan on doing some of those as the years go by. But don't expect it in the next two years or so. expect it in the next two years or so, it might be ten or plus years, more, depending upon the allocation of funds. With that, we will return to the regular schedule on our agenda, and we are on item 10, this is to consider application S-14-2015 filed by Adam Nash for a final plat approval for a subdivision. That is the issue before us, so to the council for comment or action.
May I move for approval of application S-14-2015?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, that's properly before us. With that, any discussion or comments? Seeing none, we'll place it for a vote, all in favor of approving application S-14-2015, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion passes unanimously, the application is approved. I don't believe we have a need for an executive session, any other comments from the council? We will, for your information, we will close our regular council meeting, but we do have immediately following this, another meeting of the West Valley City Redevelopment Agency, of which the council forms the board. So, you'll note that we'll adjourn and then start a new meeting. With that then, a motion for adjourning this meeting.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion passes unanimously, this city council meeting is adjourned.
Call the Order of the West Valley City Redevelopment Agency Special Meeting, note that all members are in attendance, we have one resolution on our agenda, 15-13, Mr. Powell, would you introduce that, please?
Yes, thank you ma'am, we are pleased to bring you before this evening, the next step in development and redevelopment of our Fairborn Station project in the company in city center area, we have a very awesome project that we're about to enter into, and is going to redevelop the next piece of the ground here just to the west of the Embassy Suites Hotel. We have with us here tonight, some folks that are representing major real estate investors, LLC, the project that will act, or the entity that will actually be in charge of developing the project, we have Mr. Dave Tanner here, who was introduced earlier, and you may or you may not want to hear from him, but the purpose of the item is to consider an agreement for development of land, or ADL, which will allow us as an RDA to proceed forward with the project in conjunction with partners here to build the proposed project, which I might mention the board has been briefed on and seen earlier this evening, both in terms of what the agreement would entail, as well as some various construction, conceptual drawings and aerial views.
Do you want to have Jake bring up the building?
Sure, absolutely, can do that. So, as it's warming up, maybe I can give you a little further background as to what's proceeded and what the mix of our development is, as the board knows, we have successfully accomplished a number of the elements of the Fairborn Station project, we have the transit hub, which includes three different modes of transit, which has been very attractive to various investors, we have put together a retail component in terms of the Embassy Suites Hotel and restaurant, as well as a housing and residential component, and now we're seeing our first, what you would normally refer to as professional or office-type development element of the project, and of course, we have others on slate proceeding down the track as well, but we're pleased again, tonight, to bring this one to you. So, with that, I thought I saw a flash of an elevation and an aerial, there they are. I don't know if you want me to kind of monty hall the presentation here, but...
I think just for the public, or people who might be watching on their internet, it'd probably be a good idea.
Sure, absolutely, okay, so as I mentioned earlier, the project, or this particular building within the project is just to the west of the Embassy Suites Hotel, or just north of the promenade and the park that the city has recently developed. We are talking about a four-story development, if I'm speaking correctly, Mark, and if I can get corrected here at any point by Mr. Norwood, our development manager over the project, but it's also a little larger in scale and form than your normal four-story office development, it's got very nice architecture, and is parked well, and is also available and considering further development, along associated with the use that will be there, so we're very pleased to have the project here.
Okay, thank you. Are there any comments or motion from the members of the board?
This is a $27 million building project on behalf of these people, titled now the Hercules Project, I think, and what we're proposing to do then is to sell them this land so they can receive the project.
Correct.
Madam Chair, move for, we pass resolution 15-13, authorizing this action.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, so any other further discussion? So, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The resolution passes, and the motion is for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm going to go.